Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting of Falls Township for July 22, 2024. We're going to start with a salute to the flag.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America, in this republic, with its ten nations, a nation of rights, in the business of justice for all.
Okay, item number one on the agenda is...
I'll take roll.
Oh, we're going to take roll.
Jeff Dents. Aaron Mullen.
Here.
John Palmer.
Here.
Jeff Boraski. I'm, of course, here. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item number one on our agenda is a report on the executive session.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen. The board held an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss a matter of potential litigation, two personnel matters, and two matters involving collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Item number two is public comment. Is anybody here for public comment? Yes.
Tony Batiste, Gloucester Road in Fairless Hills. I was curious where actually is Rome Street? I did not get a chance to go over to the township and check on it. I Googled it, can't find it, and I can't find any place on the website for Falls Township where it's mentioned.
Does that make sense? Because it's a paper street, doesn't actually exist.
I love that, Lauren.
Yeah. Do you want to answer that, Lauren?
Certainly. So this is an application to vacate what's known as a paper street, which means that the street only ever existed on paper. And so the applicant is making the argument that the township never opened the street, has no intention of opening the street, and will never open the street, so they want that reverted back to the property owner. But it would not appear on any text or any liquid.
Okay, so it actually doesn't belong to the township, or it does belong to the township?
It's on an official map of the township as a potential street, but it only exists on paper.
So the township doesn't own it?
Correct. It is not owned by the township.
Okay. And the matter of public notices, is there any place on the website that we can find these public notices? Because I know a lot of people do not get the Courier-Times anymore. And that's where you put the notices. So is it on the website, anywhere?
For this particular public notice?
Well, any of the public notices that you normally put in the paper, are they also on your website somewhere? It should be. And if you're going to talk about them, you're going to vote on them, the public should have a right to know that you are going to do this and what it's about.
I didn't see them.
It's listed on the agenda, which is on the website.
It's on the agenda, but, you know, usually in public notices, you have this whole big long spiel about it. It'd just be nice if the citizens could see it ahead of time, because you don't publish the agenda usually until the Friday before the meeting.
Yeah, I understand. But just for the record, we're in compliance with public notices, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, yes, it is in compliance with the public notice. I'm just saying that most people don't get the paper anymore. And the other question I have is about the fire tax. And does a percentage of that go to the EMS, or is it just to the fire companies? So we don't know?
We want to be accurate.
Pardon?
We want to be accurate.
Okay.
Thanks, Tony. Okay. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Item number three is a... You're on the list?
I'm the outside.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Todd Vreeland. I'm the deputy chief at Levittown Fairliss Hills Rescue Squad. And again, just like last month, I want to just give you an update on what we're doing, what we've been up to. So since we've gone through the first half of the year now, so I've compiled the numbers for that. So for the first half, we've done 3,864 calls we've responded to within all of our coverage areas. And Falls Township, there has been 1,842 calls. And of them, we responded to 89% of those calls for service. So if, again, anyone has any questions about the ambulance service, about emergency care we're providing, please let us know. And we're going to be talking about one of our calls that we responded to. And I'd like to say before everything else, that this person's son did an excellent job, and we would not be here if it was not for him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Item number three is a presentation of life-saving certifications. Mr. Dipolito.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to do this presentation. Some of the background, the event was brought to my attention by Jeff Boraski, one of our supervisors, who asked me if I was aware of what had transpired. Unfortunately, I wasn't there. I had to dig in to find out what exactly went on. The supervisor, or the supervisors nominated the people that we're going to recognize tonight for these citations. And I don't think we do that often enough. A lot of it is taken for granted from all our first responders, whether they're police, fire, EMS. A save, I was talking to somebody outside, and they said, you know, a save is something we're expected to do. But we don't have too many outcomes that we can sit here and say, you know, this was due to a team effort, and someone's here to, you know, to witness this based on those actions. Zach was, I'm going to read you something first, soon as I can find it. The situation was on June 21, 2024, at 19:19, so 7:19 in the evening. A call was placed to 911 by Zach Lazott, who happens to be a member of Levittown Station 32, reporting his mother was in cardiac arrest and he was starting CPR. Zach continued high-quality CPR. As Chief 32 Jimmy Bray, Officer Steckler, Officer Shannon, and Corporal Sansone also arrived, along with the Rescue Squad from Levittown Fairliss Rescue Squad, which was manned by Mike Low and Tyler Horvath. They determined the victim was in ventricle fibrillation, trying to say that twice, and administered two shots from defibrillator. They continued CPR and respirations. Shortly thereafter, Morrisville Rescue Squad manned by Rich Brandal and Andrew Holtzman also arrived to assist. The team effort restored her heartbeat and undoubtedly saved her life. It's no doubt that the efforts that they demonstrated were exceptional professionalism and skills in the performance of their duties, which resulted in a life being saved. So at this time, I'd like to first bring up Zach. These citations all basically read the same, some minor modifications. But in this case, presenting Zach with a civilian life-saving award, although he's a member of 32s, he was acting on his own at home and was able, you know, not many people can say they saved their mom. So at this point, I'd like to present this to Zach. If I could get Dean, Matt, well, Matt couldn't make it, Matt Shannon, and Corporal Sansone up. You know what, as a unit citation, I think I'll bring everybody up at one time. It makes more sense. So we're going to bring up Mike Low and Tyler Horvath from Levittown Fairliss Hills, Rich Brandal, Andy Holtzman can't, couldn't make it, right? He didn't end up showing up. And Jimmy Bray, somewhere in here. You try and do this. Jimmy, where you at? There you go. Let me give you these out as we're going. That's Dean's, Michael, Tyler, Alex, Richie, where are you? There you are. Richie, I'm going to give you Andy's, too. Can you make sure he gets it, please? And can you guys make sure Matt gets his? Thank you. So at this time, the statement I read is placed on these unit citations that I issued to the nine people, seven of which, right? Did I do my math? Six. Six of which could attend tonight. So I'd like to just give a round of applause for these guys for a great job saving a life. I'm sure, do you want to grab a photo? You want to walk there, please?
Yes. Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Great work. Thank you.
Oh, that would have been nice, wouldn't it? Yeah. My bad. I'll bring up Mom. I forgot. What am I thinking?
This is Mom?
Mom and Mom. Nice to see you tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Again, thank you to the board for allowing us. I like to do this more often as things evolve or come up. So, but thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Dipolito. That was excellent. Very cool. Okay. Moving on to item number four is a consideration of certificate of appropriateness for 16-yardly avenue installation of solar panels on the roof. Nobody's here for this, right?
No.
Okay, it's pretty straightforward. It's just a certificate of appropriateness for the installation of solar panels on the roof of 16-yardly Avenue in Fallington. We do have an approval from the Historical Architectural Review Board. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
No, it's simple. Thank you.
Any public comment? No public comment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so item number five is the aforementioned consideration of petition from Danja LLC to vacate Rome Street. And who do we have here for this?
Good evening. My name's Chelsea Jackman. I'm an attorney with Begley, Carlin, Mandio. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. And I will call up, I have Eric Clase from Gilmore and Associates, who's the professional engineer on this matter. And I have Tony DeSandro, who owns CVA, as well as Danja LLC, who was the previous applicant in this matter. So the first item on the agenda is, as previously mentioned, the request to vacate the paper street, known as Rome Street. And if I could, Mr. Clase, could you possibly pull up your exhibit while I'm talking, you can get a better idea of what is we're looking to do, if I could just take one moment? Thank you. As you can see, Rome Street is, Mr. Clase, if you could point it out for us, the area of Rome Street is comprised of a bunch of tiny little parcels. They are all owned by Danja LLC. Rome Street bisects all of those parcels and has, which is the area that CVA, which is the business owned by Danja, has occupied for many years. It's been confirmed that for decades. Rome Street has been unopened. There was no intention ever to open it. It is a classic paper street. The northeast corner, and to discuss why we're seeking to vacate the paper street, I can't really do that without getting into the second item on the agenda, which is the request for an allocation of space for a third-party tenant to lease that area. It's a trucking company. And by way of brief background, CVA has occupied that space for decades in the HC District. And their industrial use is pre-existing, non-conforming. And for the better part of two years, they've been leasing it to a trucking company, not realizing that they needed to request an allocation of space. When they learned that they needed to do that, they further self-reported that they would need, the tenant would need zoning relief as a secondary principal use, and appealed to the ZHB, for which relief was granted. Subsequently, we went to the Planning Commission, and they recommended approval, which brings us to tonight, that the paper street to be vacated, to confirm the historical utilization of the property. Like I said, that's been that way, yeah, if you could hold it up that way. That's been that way for many years. There's no land development being sought, and CVA is committed to leasing to only one tenant. I submit to you that the tenants that have been there have been very good tenants. It's been well-managed. They've kept a very clean property. And so essentially, what we're asking for tonight is to confirm kind of what's been the case for many years. And from an outsider's perspective, it's really just, there's no change to what's been going on. So if you've had no problems, you'll continue to have no problems with this particular tenant maintaining the property as they have. So that's the reason for the paper street, because as you can see, right on the top here, and I'll point it out. It goes right through the area which CVA is looking to lease to that third party. That's all we have. Mr. DeSandro is behind me, if there's any questions for him individually.
Thank you.
And this is just something that you discovered, and you reported yourselves, right?
That's correct, yes.
I heard it said. Thank you.
Did notice have to go out to any of the neighboring residents?
So because the part that we're only seeking to request to be vacated, the only adjacent property orders are CVA. So there's nobody else that needed notification, you know, to have that done.
Okay, great. Okay, so sticking just with item number five, for the consideration from a petition from Danja LLC to vacate Rome Street, are there any other questions from the board?
None.
No questions.
Is there any public comment? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
This is ordinance number two?
I'm sorry, this is an ordinance? Can you repeat the number?
Number two.
Two.
Ordinance number two. And it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
And anything else to say on the waiver of land development? I think you covered it, but if you...
Not if you don't have any questions.
We're officially on that item?
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Galloway and Mr. Palmer, any questions from?
No questions.
No questions.
Any public comment? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
This is Resolution 2024-24.
Okay.
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Resolution 2024-24. Thank you.
Are you all set?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. We'll try and get a stand for next time. Okay, item number seven. Is the consideration of approval to amend the change order for Rycon approved at the June 24, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Tequita, for those of us having déjà vu, do you just want to explain what happened?
At the June 24 meeting, the board approved a change order for Rycon. The amount stated at the meeting was $293,107.36. This number was short. The amended number that needs to be put in to make the change order whole is $706,892.64. That would be, that would take the total change order to $1 million, which was the original request.
Any questions from the board for item number seven?
No questions.
No questions.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Similarly, number eight, consideration of approval to amend the change order for Grace Construction approved at the June 24, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Again, on this change order, the amount quoted at the meeting was $232,64.90. This did not include third-party costs in the amount of $475,182.14. And that is the number being requested to be approved tonight.
Questions from the board?
No questions.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine, consideration of ratifying contract amendment for Allstate's mechanical. We sticking with you, Mr. Tequita?
At the last board meeting, the board approved amending Allstate's contract to the original bid amount. It was approved by the board. Between that meeting and this meeting, I had signed the approval of the contract, and the board is being asked just to ratify that contract amendment.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Any public comment? Okay, there's none. I'll make the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item 10, consideration of change order number two for Design Brands, formerly IEI Architects, Inc., for professional services. And this is a new one. And I'll make sure we get this total right. So this is $123,912.50?
No, the total amount requested is $209,000 even. This includes the cost of Remington Burnick Engineers, and the total number is a not-to-exceed.
Oh, I see. $209,000 even. Any questions from the board?
No.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number 11 is consideration of additional design and inspection costs for Jones Engineering Associates with a not-to-exceed amount. The not-to-exceed amount is for $98,300 that could potentially be performed in the estimated five additional months of the renovation project. Is there any questions from the board on this one?
No question.
Any public comment? Okay, I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number 12, consideration of manager's recommendation for Speedway Towing and Repair LLC.
The board, on July 22, 2024, a hearing was held pursuant to Section 206-12 of the Falls Township Code regarding allegations that Speedway Towing had violated Chapter 206 of the code. Based on evidence presented, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors affirm the administrative suspension of Speedway Towing through today's date, and reinstate Speedway Towing's duty tow license as soon as reasonably practicable, subject to the conditions agreed to by Speedway Towing. It is recommended that a formal warning letter be issued that advises Speedway Towing, that any violations of the code will result in further sanctions, including but not limited to the revocation of the wrecker's license.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on item 12?
No.
No questions.
Any public comment? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number 13, consideration of authorization for manager to finalize the award contract and the award contract to ABC Construction for the Vermillion Hills Foot Bridge project. So the 30-day responsible contract review period for this project will be completed before the next Board of Supervisors meeting. So we're being asked to consider allowing the manager to finalize the award. Any questions?
No, just about to see if the phone is getting done.
Yes.
No question.
Any public comment needed? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number 14 is consideration of escrow release for New York Point Falls Township Industrial LLC. This is an escrow release, this is escrow release number one, in the amount of $23,307,132.61. And... And that's the, yep, that's all that's being asked for release, be released to date. Any questions?
No.
Any public comment? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anybody for items 15 through 21 have an appointment to any of our boards or committees?
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 22, approval of the minutes. We're going to do these together. They're the minutes from June 24 and July 9 of this year. Any questions from the board?
None.
Is there any public comment on the minutes? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't at the June 24, but I was at the other one, so I went ahead and voted. Is that appropriate, sir?
It's okay for you to vote on both. You're not certifying that you were there. You were just acknowledging that these are the official minutes of the township.
You got it. Thank you.
And as they are, excellent minutes, as always. You thought I was going to forget, didn't you? Okay, item number 23 is the engineer's report.
Thank you. The engineer's report was forwarded last week. There were, there's one new land development and six earth disturbances. The land development is a 232,000-square-foot warehouse off of Cabot Boulevard. The EDs are, earth disturbances are mainly building additions and pool permits. The remainder of the land developments are either in construction or were recently approved by the Board of Supervisors. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions from the board? I have none.
None.
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any public comment on the engineer's report? Okay, that brings us to item number 24, the bill list. Matt, do you have a copy of the bill list there that you could just?
Yes.
Reset the numbers for?
So the bill list totals $4,427,379.91. Of that amount, we are paying, includes payroll, payments to the contractors for the building construction, legal and engineering services, as well as insurance, inspection services, and IT support.
Thank you. Is there any questions from board members?
No questions.
No question.
Any public comment on the bill list? Okay, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that a roll call?
Paying the bills? Yes.
I'll call Matt.
Yes.
Jeff Dents. Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
Jeff Boraski. I vote yes.
Thank you. I have nothing for item 25. Do you have that, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number 25 is the July bills, which total $28,761.50. Payments were being made to Overmeyer, Redmond, Maxwell, and Hippel for township labor and personnel legal matters.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
No question.
Any public comment? Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Roll call?
Oh.
Yes, you're paying bills.
Yes, can you do the roll as you do so well?
Thank you. Jeff Baraski. John Palmer.
Yes.
Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
Jeff Dance. I vote yes.
Thank you. Uh, you're on a roll, item 26.
Uh, this bill list represents payments made to Campbell Grant for township labor, personnel, legal matters. And the total is $18,346.11.
Thank you. Questions from board members?
No questions.
Any public comment? Could you take this roll already?
Yes. Jeff Baraski. John Palmer.
Yes.
Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
Jeff Dance. I vote yes.
Thank you. And item number 27, Jones Engineering Associates Bill List.
The, the total amount of this bill is $199,556.75 for Jones Engineering, which includes township engineering services for invoicing releases from Project Escrow's for various work completed.
Thank you, Mr. Tequita. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
No questions.
Any public comment? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Roll.
Second.
And, yeah, if you could be so kind.
Yes. Jeff Baraski. John Palmer.
Yes.
Aaron Mullen.
Yes.
Jeff Dance. I vote yes.
Thank you. Okay, item number 20 is manager comment.
No comments.
Thank you. Item number 29 is board comment.
I'd just say I hope everyone's enjoying their summer, thank you.
Thank you, any board comment?
No comment.
No comment from me either, thank you all. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.